And I did see Clarence deep in the water, very proud of his padded waiters and getting a great deal done. I got some full body exercise myself and it's a cleanup process preparing for the 30th, which will be another kind of an event that we should all be looking forward to.
Thanks Deputy Mayor, and just looking out and seeing some of our members of Planning Commission reminds me that some of our city boards and commissions, I think they're applications that can be had, so if you are a member of our community, apply. We need you, just by looking at our Planning Commission members, we are so lucky to have such great community volunteers. So yeah, join us. All right, and with that, we will have our city manager's report.
Thank you Mayor, and thank you Council. Good evening. Just a couple of comments from me. In your packet is a roughly quarterly report on city work plan projects. Staff brings this to you and to the community to highlight some of the sort of tip of the iceberg projects that the city is doing to advance policy goals and high priority projects. I want to highlight that there's 80 projects on this list, but probably 800 projects that aren't on the list. Things that are below the, below the surface of the water, but that keep the city, keep the city moving. Um, the projects on the list, you'll note that some of them have double asterisks, which mean that they support the high priority projects that the council identified last June. And so we're just trying to highlight those for you and for the community. This is a project that, or excuse me, a report that we do quarterly, it'll be posted on the website. This one looks backwards at 2024, but we'll be bringing you one in April that looks at 2025. So I encourage you to take a look at that and we'll post that again to the website so that folks can, can see where, where we're advancing some of the policy priorities that are up there on the wall. Uh, next, we had a big windstorm last night, as most people know. Um, we experienced roughly 15 or 16 closures or partial closures of our roads on Bainbridge Island. About half of those have been cleared by city staff and the Puget Sound Energy. We still have about half to go and most of those are waiting for PSC to have time and staff to get to the island. So I would also like to take this opportunity to put in a plug for Nixel. For you and the community, this is the way that the city communicates with people when there is an emergency on our island. And you can sign up for Nixel by texting 98110, ours is code 2888777. This information is also on our website and it's a great way to stay in communication with the city and hopefully not have to take a detour when you're trying to drive somewhere in an unexpected way.
Thank you.
Mayor comment to the city manager?
Sure.
Just thank you for the report and just thanks to our city staff. You know, while we have power and it's cold, we're inside our homes, remember these people are out there in the cold and they're doing this clearing our roads, making roads safe and the utility workers trying to get as quickly as possible, get that power up. So we often forget about that. I don't, and I really appreciate their work. And let's be respectful of that, that the service that all these people do for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Councilmember, Councilmember Hytopolis.
Yeah, I'm glad, I appreciate the deputy city manager bringing this subject up because I just was wondering, do we have any, I was trying to check the, the app and it's a nightmare, it's not updating. And do we have any information about, I think a lot of people are still without power and there's a lot of just absolutely no restoration time and, and would Nix, we ever use Nixel to pass on information when we're having such a hard time, I think as PSC customers interfacing directly?
The best information we have right now is on the PSC outage map. Um, I, I could, I guess see a case for using Nixel for that if there was something really extreme, but we do try to limit our use of Nixel to things that are really emergent to make sure that folks pay attention when, when those alerts come out. But yeah, we also are waiting for the power to come back on. Even in City Hall, we didn't have power until about 10:30 this morning and we're certainly grateful that it got restored.
Do we have, are there any, this may seem extreme, it's not that cold tonight, but for people maybe who are using, who need medical devices or whatever, if we're out indefinitely at this point, do we, or do we have any emergency options available for people overnight or anything?
Uh, the, our severe weather shelter is not open tonight. If people, yeah, it, it hasn't met our, our weather threshold, but if it continues, then I think there's a, a number of hours of power outage that would then trigger that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to jump on the, uh, jump on, or Councilmember Morawaki's comments and just really highlight what great staff we have. You know, wherever I am, there's usually someone who comes up to me to, to give a compliment to one of our staff members. It happened this last week when I was at Association of Washington Cities. A young gentleman came up to like looking at badges to seek out Bainbridge Island to say, um, what a great instructor our deputy city manager had been at something he'd been at, and that was really cool. And then recently we had a mayor, um, one of the mayors came up and said, wow, you have Haley Bone Steel. And I was like, we don't have anyone named Haley Bone Steel, I don't know what you're talking about. But then duh, that's HB. And so it's just like, no matter who we have going out into the community, uh, we have, you know, it's really cool to hear all the compliments that we get out from outside of our community. All right, and with that, we will go on to regular business. Okay. First item is our, we are going to receive a monthly report on the Winslow SubArea Plan and comprehensive plan updates.
There we go. Good evening, City Council, Patty Chana's Planning and Community Development. We really appreciate these opportunities to provide monthly updates on the Winslow SubArea Plan and Comprehensive Plan. Normally I describe progress on, on data or outreach and I have slides. I had hoped to have more to report tonight. I do not have any slides. As you know from previous times and previous updates, Winslow SubArea can serve where planning for middle and multifamily housing and related services can occur. Listed in your agenda summary are the meetings that have occurred with the Planning Commission thus far and the topics discussed so, so far as well. Staff have prepared work for the Planning Commission to recommend an outer boundary and we believe they're close on agreeing on what that should be and how that should be recommended. And then after that zoning districts within the outer, the Winslow SubArea Boundary and development standards within those zoning districts. Once this word is addressed, the rest of the planning and policy work becomes very clearly illuminated and can move forward. We remain hopeful that the Planning Commission can make these key policy recommendations. And we know that City Council wishes to hear those recommendations once they are made. So at the moment, there are no specific recommendations. However, it's important to note, it is very clear that the Planning Commission cares deeply and takes very seriously the body of work before them. Staff is ready to help fill in the details and work with the Planning Commission to move forward on the work that remains. Um, another item that I want to bring up is that we're delighted when we hear about or learn from the numerous outside satellite meetings that occur in the community. We as staff wish to serve as a synthesis for that work. Staff is not necessarily made aware of these, this outside work or these meetings, which is fine. Um, however, roles and responsibilities become somewhat muddled when so much earnest work is completed separately without that staff synthesis. It challenges cohesion, which is necessary for a solid product. So we look forward to coming back next time with a lot of great progress to report and I look forward to hearing your discussion on this topic tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you Director. Uh, Councilmember Hytopolis.
Um, so I have, I actually have a question, well, a comment first. A comment that came out of a recent conversation with actually a couple of their council members. And that was with regards to what happened to the steering committee? Um, while I was on medical leave for like over a month, it stopped meeting and I wasn't at the meeting where, wherever, or if there was ever an announcement as to what happened. And I feel very remiss in not then coming back and saying what happened. So I just want to put that out there. I'm not asking for resolution tonight. Um, I know that city manager's not here, et cetera, but I'm going to put a, put that out there that I think we need to talk about reconvening that. I think a lot of the fact that there are, I'm not saying it would stop little meetings from happening or whatever, but does, it does feel like there's, you know, there's a, there's a division or there's a, you know, we're, we, we're no longer officially communicating with the Planning Commission in some way. There's a loss of connection and whatever we were doing there. And so I think it's really important we do that. So I wanted to bookmark that. I do want to say that in all the conversations I've had recently, I'm really having a hard time understanding how, and this goes to something the planning director just said, I'm not understanding how the Planning Commission could make informed decisions about boundaries or which areas they're interested in staying upzoned if they don't know what number they're working with. So they've started with the DIS that had around 11,000 people projected. The reaction, I believe, of the majority of this council when that came out was, what is this? No. So we're looking at something less than that. I think they're doing an awful lot of work trying to figure out the why behind numbers so that they could get a number. Because if we didn't have to create more capacity, we wouldn't be talking about adjusting boundaries or upzoning areas. So if, if the community is probably not interested in us just mindlessly opening up the boundaries and then just saying, you know, it'd be kind of cool to have this here and that there and that there. And hey, let's see eventually what that turns out into capacity. Then we need to have that capacity first. And I feel very strongly the community sees this as driven by a capacity need, not the other way around. So I just want to put that out there and I don't know if the planning director can answer it or someone can direct, how it is the Planning Commission could make recommendations about size of Winslow and zoning in Winslow if they are working towards a number and of course the affordability of those units.
Thank you. So maybe we'll take all, we'll go one round, all questions in that, so you don't have to go up and down. Uh, Councilmember Dees.
Great. Thank you Mayor and, and thank you Patty for that presentation. And I appreciate the comments by Councilmember Hytopolis. So I, I've been thinking, one thing Councilor Hytopolis mentioned paraphrased that there's not a lot of connection of, of work between the council and Planning Commission. I mean, some of us go to their meetings and it's great to see you here at our meeting. I had proposed a few weeks ago in an internal email of doing a joint Planning Commission council meeting. And I'll just say, it kind of died on the vine. I, I'll just say, I asked for a reply and no one replied to me. So I just want to throw that out that I do see value in having our two bodies interact and any questions Planning Commission may have, if they make sure they're going on a path that they know that we would be supportive of. So I just want to throw that out now that I have a chance to talk about it is, is that being considered? Is that maybe I'm not aware of that, that consideration? But I did make that ask and, and that I didn't hear anything since then. Thank you.
Councilmember Fantra Johnson and then Deputy, oh, okay Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you Mayor. I have a number of comments about the role that I've tried to play throughout this whole process. Cause I've been through the comprehensive planning process before and I've know how the Planning Commission works. And they're working just as well as I ever experienced in my years, three terms there. What I've tried to do, especially in recent weeks, is to be, go between sometimes. Uh, I'm involved in a lot of give and take with citizens, many of whom make assertions that I want to question. Uh, I want to be attentive to issue, issues and not involved in an argument, but trying to clarify my own perspective, my own understanding of what we're dealing with and, and so on. And I want to continue with that role until somebody tells me, look, we've heard enough, you should step back. I know how to step back as well as to come forward and to try to put pieces together. Because we do necessarily and appropriately work in separate groups. Some, some work is done behind, behind the scenes, not in public meetings. There's a lot that can't be done in a public meeting. And I, I recommend in some cases that the Planning Commission work with subcommittees devoted to specific tasks that can be completed and reported upon efficiently in a full meeting so that the issues are presented and the alternatives are weighed and the whole planning commission can decide on the basis of a subcommittee report. I think that the communication between outside groups can, as the planning director said, uh, sometimes create muddles or, or raise, raise just, just, uh, too many undecided things, too many unclarified, uh, issues. But that's, that's why I'm paying as much attention as I can to the various things that are going on and the different stakeholders and, and interest groups that are involved. I think that, uh, Councilmember Hytopolis raised a very important question with reference to how much capacity are we creating with our upzoning? My understanding of capacity as it's presented to us in the draft environmental impact statement, it's, it's, it's a, it's a figure that is hypothetical and very mushy. It's a maximum rather than anything factual, anything that truly represents what will happen, what should happen in the course of decades of development. Dick, development that is developed, that is managed as carefully as, as it can be. There is development that is highly entirely market driven, but we are struggling with the market and trying to produce the right results with market forces and with, uh, investment of various kinds, using public funds, using, uh, the resources of nonprofits and so on. So I feel that there is no such thing as a capacity need. There is a capacity horizon. And we shouldn't be troubled, we shouldn't be thinking in terms of the city planning for 11,000 new people. That is simply not, not what's going on. And it certainly is not what's going on in, in the next 10 years or the next 20 years. We are planning for, uh, a certain number of units, a certain number of people in the affordable housing categories, up to the middle of the area median income and, and a little beyond that. So I want to urge people to just, let's take our time and recognize there are recommendations coming from the Planning Commission. There are decisions that are further down the line. The recommendations will go to consultants as well as to city staff who will be working, and I want to hear later in the meeting, more from the Planning Director about the pieces of the, the subarea plan and also the pieces. Maybe this is something that we can't cover tonight, but the various pieces of the comprehensive plan. Cause what we're doing with the subarea plan is contributing a great deal to our comprehensive plan, to the land use and housing elements. And we're also planning for, for mobility and transportation fabric in the Winslow area, which contributes to our island-wide transportation network, which will have to be considerably revised from the current transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And that is in the hands of capable people in the Public Works Department. So I'll have further questions later on, but I want to give the next voice to other people.
Okay. So next was Councilmember Fantra Johnson. Yep. Councilmember Fantra Johnson, then Councilmember Schneider.
I just wanted to thank you for giving us the update that was really not an update. But I, I think what I wanted to really talk about a little bit was the comments, I think, about the Planning Committee meetings and whether or not there's some issue with getting through the agenda. And, you know, how can we kind of help with that, you know? Because we expect that you're working on something, but if you're being deterred from that, then maybe we ought to look at that a little bit. And Councilmember Hytopolis, we are really glad that you are back with us. And I, I want to know, I would like to be reminded of what the Steering Committee's job was and what was accomplished so far. So that we're all on the same page when we bring this back. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So in responding to one of the questions before with regards to, you know, how does the Planning Commission do its job if they don't know what the, what the units, the unit number, the capacity that they're creating is? I wanted to say what I think is true, which is that it's kind of a chicken and an egg question. What I think the process is, is that once we, whether it's Planning Commission or Council or a combination of the two, say that, you know, we're, we'd like to move forward with an assumption of such and such, some boundary of Winslow, then that will trigger an opportunity for planning staff to go to their consultants and say, okay, do the math and come back with the capacity number that that entails. And, and so that number doesn't come easily. It costs us. It's, every time we ask for it, it's a fairly deep process. So I think it, I think we are expected to come up with these proposals. And then we can ask, what does the capacity look like for that? Then my concern about where this process goes eventually with regards to, you know, how, how many, what the capacity is that we're required to take? And then how much of that has to go for various levels of affordable housing? It doesn't really leave anything open for a sort of middle income segment for the island. And I think this is something we need to have more debate about. What I would like to say is that, I think for me, it's obvious that there is still quite a bit of quote unquote affordable, middle income housing on the island because we, and I'll include myself in this, we are families that purchased, you know, 10 to 20 years ago, if not further. And so it is affordable for us because it's not a recent purchase. But, you know, we get older, we decide to sell, we die. And then that goes, that all that housing goes up to market rate and it becomes very expensive. So now, and, and then counter to that, you know, we'll do our best to provide income-based affordable housing. But the, but the biggest subsidies for doing that serve the populations of 60% and below. That's where a lot of the, the, the tax, tax credits are and so forth. And it is just, you know, it takes a huge subsidy to make that happen. So I'm afraid that we are going to end up with, if we don't look at how we have middle income folks living here on the island, that we're going to end up with only very wealthy and service level population here on the island. So I would like this to be a question that the Planning Commission and Council debates and says, well, I believe we will have a middle income if we do this. And then someone else says, well, I believe we could have a middle income if we do that. So we have our job to do to provide affordable housing. But I really think this is super important that we have another job to do that is not required by the state, which is making sure that we don't end up with the ultra wealthy and, and the, the folks that serve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews, and thank you, Councilmember Schneider, for saying everything I wanted to say. I, I was focused on the missing middle, as they call it. And, and we need social, we talk about diversity. I'm big on that, diversity, equity, and inclusion, but we don't talk about socioeconomic diversity very much. And to your point, it can't be, and I, we can't be Jackson Hole or, or these communities where all the help comes in the morning, leaves in the afternoon. And we see that. And it's even here. I think we pay very well for the city of Bainbridge Island, yet 70% of our employees don't live here. Same with the fire district, same with the school district. What kind of representation is that? And these are the people who work here. And so we need to have as a number two thing on our council priorities for this year, affordable housing. And I, we agreed with that and I'm glad all of the colleagues think that's important. That's why the project that's taking place over on the former police station, fire station site is so critical that we have done. And it's also an important policy issue for all of us. Not only we have the socioeconomic diversity, but we have to have a very vibrant economy. And you can't have an economy where everybody, 70% of the people you're paying are going to some other city and spending their money there. Paul's Bow and Silverdale and Bremerton love us. Our employees are going there and they're renting the houses or doing the mortgages and buying groceries and gas. And we're not seeing any touch of that. The health of a community, how many times does a dollar bill get touched in your community? For those people who we, who paid their checks, and that's also you employers. You're investing in these employees, but they're not circulating their money back into the town of which they work. So this is, it's a vibrancy for the, to, to emphasize what Councilmember Schneider said. What kind of community is this? Is it going to be one that is broad and equal? And we've lost a lot of students, that middle income or middle, uh, missing middle. We've lost hundreds and hundreds of students because young parents can't afford to live here anymore. And so where's the future in that? And that's our number one employer on this island, by the way, school district. So it's a bigger picture. And that comprehensive plan is important. And to the Planning Commissioners, I hope you get the sense that we really appreciate your work. Especially some of the graphs and charts that, and images that you've put together. It's quite extraordinarily well done. I look forward to more. I, I feel like on those kind of things, we're kind of getting free consultations or free consultants. So I, I'll, I'll take free. So, um, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilmember Murawaki. I'll go before we go around again. So I just wanted to say thank you, Planning Director and staff, and thank the community as well as all of us. This is really hard work that we're doing. And so I just want us all to give each other a little grace and assume good intentions. I think a lot of times it's easy to say, you think this one's hiding something or that one's hiding something and not giving me all the information. And I don't see that. I think everyone's roles are really important here. Every time I meet with someone different, I'm blown away by how close we are to saying the same thing. Like we'll think we're saying something completely different and the way we're saying it might be different, but we are saying the same thing, that we want to protect the natural resources, that we want to protect the community and just abide by whatever targets we were supposed to get. So I think we're close. I think we are saying the same thing. I agree with reconvening the Steering Committee. I think the purpose of it, when I was thinking about why we did it, was to help with or to, for a robust public process and to develop that. So this to me seems like a really good time for that as we come into, like having the D I S, you know, making the, making the decision of the alternatives. It's a great time to work on what public process will do with that as well as what to do with the groundwater management programs or the groundwater management boards. I think it's perfect timing to get that committee going so that we can deal with the end work that there's going to be a lot left to do. And as far as the joint meeting, I was really for that, but the more and more I think about it, I don't know, it's, I'm, I could, if that's what folks want, I would support it if that's what the Planning Commissioners want. I just think they're such a good body. I don't want to taint them with us. No, not taint, but like, they're doing such great work. I don't know what the benefit would be to having them join us up here and folks talking over each other when it's really cool just to see what they are coming up with and let them come up with their work and give them the space to do that. But if they feel like that they, it's something that they want to do and have a joint meeting and that it would feel like we are not valuing them by not having it, then I'm totally supportive with having a joint meeting. It's up to you guys. And then, yeah, I think that was it. Oh, and just in thinking about the work that we've been giving to the Planning Commission. It's like, I think in terms of us thinking about who they are and what they do, a lot of the times it used to be like, when I was on Planning Commission, or it would be like, we would get things that, not that folks are too good before, but we would get things like that are sort of sometimes busy work. I don't think these folks have time for it right now. So as we start to think of like more historical preservation things and, and other things that might go on Planning Commission's plate, I think we really need to have our North Star in line of what we want them using their expertise for and what's the most valuable use of their time. Okay, Councilmember Hytopolis.
So I think that yes, the Steering Committee was originally anticipated to be largely about public process. But what's important, it's more important what the Steering Committee can't be, and there's some room there in between that could be more helpful now too. So what the Steering Committee cannot be is, is a small group policy conversation, right? Because that needs to be happening through the proper process. But some of the issues that we're having right now between making sure that, that we're just in dialogue between the two bodies on how the process is going. And if there's anything that needs to be tweaked in the process, whether it's, whether it's the public process, this is all the public process. So, you know, I, I think there could be a lot of value in that because it would be a direct conduit for us. And I think it's what's most important, so we don't have little meetings here and there that are in back rooms and so forth that are not going to be effective anyway. And people should be coming together in a room. I, I don't think a joint meeting makes any sense because I, I think that the Planning Commission needs its space to do its work. And council members bring with them personalities and a sense of, you know, we're the ultimate decision makers. And it's, I, I don't see us having any kind of meeting with the Planning Commission where we're influencing their ability to make their own determinations about what, what they think their recommendation should be. I don't think they can spare the time to spend time with us. They're busy. But I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, kind of again, on, on the issue of the boundaries and the, and the upzoning areas versus the number. This community has been very clear always, as long as we've been doing comprehensive plans that I'm aware, the community has wanted to grow to the level it has to grow. I'm sorry if that sounds horrible, but it's the truth. We have a growth number. We've been able to meet it until, until, you know, well, until 1220. And we would have needed to meet, we needed, needed to add capacity by the next planning horizon. This planning horizon, we might have gone under the radar, you know, it slid under there again. But 1220 has in fact told us that there are some number of units that we're not going to be able to accommodate. But because that has been, the community has never asked to grow Winslow, to grow Winslow. The, the community, we hope the community will understand that we may need to grow Winslow in some way to add a certain number of units. But this is a critical distinction. We're not just saying, I'd never heard the community say, let's expand Winslow because we want it to be bigger. Let's add more density because that's what we want. We do that because we need to do it. And right now we need to do it for 1220. So that's my point about, I feel like the Planning Commission is being told like, that's over there. Tell us the boundaries and tell us where you want the growth. And somehow we're going to back into a number? The community wants a small number. And that is not, that is not an anti-affordable housing statement. In fact, it is so the opposite because what we know is if we say we're trying to meet 0% area median income to 60%, probably even 80% of area median income. And we say, well, we've now created these 600 additional multifamily units here in Winslow. We're done and we're going to go home. What that's going to be is, is it's going to be market rate. That's what it's going to be. And so, you know, again, the community is going to want it being defrauded and they're going to figure that out. If what we say is, we've got to build 1,600 new units from zero to, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the number, to 120. And we've done that. Here's the multifamily units, because that's not going to give us affordable housing. And I guess the last thing I wanted to say was that, you know, it's, it's obvious, but this idea, I, I hate it when we, when we bring, we have to entertain this concept that, well, it won't get built. We'll zone it, but we've never, look at our historical, we, we hear a lot of, look at our historical growth rate. I thought what we've been saying is if we have need for a certain type of housing, we want to make sure it happens. So if we're zoning properly for the housing we need, why would we not be saying, we want that to happen this planning horizon? We're going to do what we can to make that happen. So we can't say it out of both sides of our mouth, that we can zone to this big, but don't worry because we'll only grow that much during this time because that's our historical growth rate. What we should be zoning for is we should be zoning for what we want. And then we should be, you know, we should be doing what we need to do with regulations and incentives, et cetera, to get that actually built. So I just hope we're not talking out of both sides of our mouth at different moments in the conversation.
Thanks, Councilmember Hytopolis. We do have a motion in the packet, so let's, but let's do one more touch. Well, except for Councilmember Hytopolis, everyone do one more touch if they would like, and then we'll.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think this is adding up to the best discussion this council has ever had. I think we're really setting a bar higher and we can learn from our success here. Because we're, we're talking among ourselves. We've, we've got someone who has answers to some questions, I think, to, to fill out the picture. I want to introduce something that will be on the list of questions to, to answer eventually. I want to build on what, what's been said about the need for missing middle housing and what Councilmember Hytopolis said about the housing that we need. We need a diversity of housing types. This how, this, we have, we have some affordable housing that has been built in recent years in Winslow. And some housing that is not exactly available to everyone in the missing middle, but it's, it's in that neighborhood. We have housing that is available and housing that is in the works for income-qualified households. But we need much more of that. We need to diversify away from the single-family housing that dominates most of our landscape. And we can do some of that within the least dense zones if we do it, if we plan for it and try to make it happen. It's my understanding that for Winslow, as we complete the, the subarea plan, we will have as a final chapter and really the culminating chapter, the most important chapter of the whole thing, goals and policies. We are building toward that chapter with the definition of boundaries, the definition We are building toward that chapter with the definition of boundaries, the definition of zoning category, zoning districts within the Winslow boundaries, and our decisions for replacing much, if not all, of the units per acre zoning with F A R standards for defining, well, defining the sizes and shapes. And we've, we've heard within the planning commission, very constructive and innovative thinking about how to mix F A R standards with the building dimensions and, and housing types and so on. So that's all going to be flushed out more in coming weeks, and much of it will be then completed in the goals and policies section of the sub-area plan, as I understand it. So that's going to provide us, I think, in the goals and policies with what we, what we, how we will get more diversity of housing types. If you look at the existing comprehensive plan and created in two thousand and sixteen, that diversity of housing types is called for and modeled within the text for both housing and land use policies. So we're not doing anything, we're doing something special, something more ambitious than we'd have before, but we have a foundation for it. We're not doing something that's never been thought of before. Joe Tovar took us ahead of our own thinking and ahead of our own capacity for, for implementing things, but now we're catching up with what was laid out for us as a set of goals in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. So we're really ready for this, and I think I think maybe the, the, the plan commission in its next meeting needs some guidance, partly from what, what the ground we're covering here, covering here, but guidance from staff in terms of what belongs in the preferred alternative chapter, and then, and what will be fully worked out in the final chapter. So maybe eventually the planning director will have more to say to wrap this all up.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Next, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I think that I, I agree with having a joint meeting. You know, it, it will give us all a chance to understand exactly where, where we all are. You know, it's like a study session where you won't be, you know, the agenda will be set, and you won't have to worry about other things coming in, taking the time away. So I'm, I'm for that. And I kind of remember that the steering committee, one of the things that was supposed to accomplish was equity for, to make sure that equity was included. And so with that, you know, we're, we're, we've never said that we're trying to upzone anything just because, you know, it's mandated that we're doing it. It's, it's not like we want to grow any more than we have to. We have a lot of, we have constraints. We are an island. But when, when we're mandated to do it, we have to take our time and look at every possible way that it's going to affect us. And we can, you know, moan and cry about it's going to affect us, but we still have to do it. So we want to spend less time moaning and more time trying to figure out how we can do what needs to be done, because nobody wants to do more than that, I don't think. Nobody wants to be the object of somebody saying, you're doing more. You know, nobody likes that at all. So I think a joint meeting would be great for us to just get our bearings and see how we can, you know, help. Yeah, we, we all have personalities, but we're grown. We, we, we know how to meet with each other without trying to take over the meeting, or some of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Moreawaki and Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. Well, first of all, I'd like to remind my colleagues that this comprehensive plan has a few other elements rather than just land use, human services, transportation, climate. We have to address those, too, and we have to update all of those as well. I know land use is the one that's, I guess, sexy and more interesting, but we do have a responsibility to, to update all elements. And then some, if we want to make this June thing, that's like four more months. We're going into March next week, so I really want us to think about that and put it on our work plan. And a lot of these elements, by the way, I don't think there are going to be much changes. I think they're pretty solid the way they are, but we still have to agree that these are the elements or the visions that we agree with. Secondly, and in terms of a joint meeting, I don't even know if it's that proper. You know, we have Climate Change Advisory Committee and Race Equity Advisory Committee, but there's only one group that is mandated by state law, and that's a planning commission. And the Vice Code of Washington deliberately made it that way, that every city, you can have your transportation committee go ahead and do it, but every city must have a planning commission. And the intent behind that was take away from the elected, have common citizens deliberate, talk about, share what they believe is important for the zoning in future. They believed it was that much, and I think it's a solid idea. I think it's a sound idea that the state legislature did to make it mandated, and also I think it makes it separate. You should be meeting by yourself and be able to just think among yourself, citizens. And I believe when, when, even when we go as council liaisons, even like something as kind as the senior, senior center group, they still get kind of intimidated because of a council member sitting there, and sometimes it mutes conversation because they won't say something. So I, the joint meeting, I don't even know if it's legal to do that together, because that's two massive public announcements. So anyway, I just don't, I think it'd be a neody. And then I'm just looking at the final, the number one thing up there, Climate Action Plan. We talk a lot about alternative transportation and green efforts and, and trying to do, Councilmember Deets says something about water conservation to be considered, but consider this. If we could have the people working here, if we could have twenty-five percent of the people who are currently working on here making that six-mile, seven-mile line that goes past the Agate Bridge, if twenty-five percent of them didn't travel and could just walk to work here, do short routes, that's impacting the climate more than any bike lanes and alternative transportation we come up with. Because an idling car pollutes more than a moving car, and fewer cars and vehicles pollute less than that many cars. So having affordable housing and having multi, multi-generational, too, but multi-level socio-economic, living on the island, also benefits our environment.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I guess I'll weigh in on the idea of a joint meeting or not. I think I would like to leave it up to the planning commission to say yea or nay on that. I don't worry too much about planning commission members worried that council members are going to dominate the conversation or anything. I mean, that assumes that our minds are already made up, right? And if they are, then your job is sort of superfluous anyway. I mean, my mind is not made up, and if, if I were on the planning commission, I would probably like the opportunity to get in there and back and forth with council members to see where their minds aren't made up and where, you know, I, as a commissioner, would be able to sort of add to the, add to that conversation. So I personally would support it if the planning commission wanted it. And then I want to say that I, I really agree with Councilmember Hytopolis, that we need to plan for what we want. It is disingenuous to plan for things that we don't think will happen. We need to plan for what we want. We need to get rid of barriers. We need to do everything we can to make sure that that happens. However, we can't downzone the capacity that we have in the, in the zero-point-four residential area. I would say that since we can't really affect that, we need to set it aside and say, that's not what we want. It'll happen if it happens. We're not going to do things to break down barriers there. I mean, I, again, I could be convinced otherwise, but for the moment, I would say that we do need to focus in the, in the Winslow area for planning for what we want. And so I would like there to be more data, more proposals for what we might want. So the state has given us what we need to plan for in the low-income part, and that's all, you know, highly subsidized. We've got tools. We need to, those tools are not going to be always easy to implement, so we've got a lot of work to do there. But what do we want in terms of middle housing? And how do we make that happen? How do we plan for that? And how do we take down the barriers to make that happen? So I don't know how many middle-income homes we need to plan for. I'm really open on that, but we need to set a target. We need to say, okay, we, you know, we can agree on this many additional homes to ensure that we have a balanced balanced population here on the island. And then how can we, how can we encourage that market rate housing? Or I am so sold on sort of the income-qualified, limited equity ability to, you know, sell homes to middle-income people. But we just have to figure out how much subsidy those are going to take. I mean, I would be happy for us to assume that, you know, middle-income people, even up to one hundred and fifty percent, you know, need to be subsidized in some way. I'm okay with that, but how do we make that happen? So there's just a lot of tools we need to bring to this and, and a lot of focusing on what it is we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Last is Councilmember Deets. Before, I knew you were going to go and make the motion before you go.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
So before, maybe let's.
I have a brief statement, a question for the city attorney, and then I'll make the motion. Okay, so the brief statement is, if the planning commission makes a motion asking for a joint meeting, I hope we would accept that. And so my question is to the city attorney, is that legal? Because that question came up. Ken, is it legal to have a joint planning commission council meeting?
Yes.
Good, okay. But with that, I will make the motion. It's the recommended motion here. I move to acknowledge the periodic update of the Baywatch Islands Comprehensive Plan was due December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and affirm all best efforts to complete the periodic update and submit for review to the Department of Commerce by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Deets made the motion, seconded by Councilmore, Councilmember Moreawaki.
Well, first, Councilmember Hytopolis. I just want to say, I appreciate the way that it's drafted, is that we're making all best efforts. I think that we are documenting for the state that we are making our best effort, but I am not voting that if for some reason we needed three more weeks or something, that that's, we're not doing that. So this is to document our best.
Of, of course. Okay, before we vote, Director Charnes, would you like to answer any questions you can and give them a little recap, and then we'll go ahead and close it?
Wow, what a great conversation. Thank you so much. I, I've worked with a lot of legislative bodies and oftentimes, not all the time, but they're laissez-faire, and that doesn't help anything, and you are nothing at all, laissez-faire, and that is wonderful. So I tried to very quickly categorize some of the common themes I heard, some of which I can respond to tonight, some of which I'd like to come back maybe at the next meeting with, first of all, I'm glad, and, you know, it, it's a lot for people to attend a lot of meetings. It's our job, staff's job. But like, when the planning commission chair and vice chair take the time out of their busy, full-time lives and full home lives to be part of this, this meeting, it means a great deal. And likewise, when council members listen in to or participate or follow up on planning commission meetings, because it really helps. So with that in mind, let me see if I can tackle some of these topics. First of all, the steering committee. As you recall, the steering committee has, in its resolution establishing it, certain roles and responsibilities primarily associated with public engagement, community outreach. And those meetings were very helpful, but indeed involved three members of the planning commission and three members of of the council, which, you know, I never really dawned on me that that is an important opportunity. However, we do and are sensitive to the fact that we don't want a satellite policymaking board. So to answer Councilmember Hytopolis's question about what happened to it, at the last meeting, and I believe it was November, October, and I, I'm just not recalling exactly when, we said we were going to suspend until March of two thousand and twenty-five, because we believe that there were no public engagement, community outreach activities that, that were going to occur other than the planning commission's setting, which is open for the public and is well-attended. So we were going to reconvene it in March. One of the key reasons is now the purpose of equity and climate lenses applied to the work of the updates. We were going to do a refresh of that now that we have a climate mitigation officer and further work of our equity manager. So with that, that's one purpose to reconvene it, and just to hit the refresh button on that body. Capacity is a great conversation and one that is concerning as well as misunderstood. When the draft environmental impact statement was issued, there was a lot of data in there, got frustrated a lot of people because it was difficult to understand. However, when we, as required by state law and doing these periodic updates, which is a review and revise if necessary, if you don't need to revise it, you don't have to, but as long as you've conducted a periodic review. And under the auspice of these new state laws that are telling local governments what to do, we, of course, will have to do some revisions, and often that happens anyway. The capacity numbers include the vast number of people and houses that can be accommodated in the ninety-one percent of our city is the conservation area. That's a huge number. I'm not going to quote it because I don't want to be misquoted, but of, and so the balance of the planning that needed to happen was, how would we finesse and consider in, in the analysis at the time, what the private market could support, what the, what public funding could support? And that was all analyzed in the draft environmental impact statement. So the number that, that resulted did exactly as Councilmember Quitzlin, Deputy Mayor Quitzlin said so well, it create, created a, where is it? It's somewhere in my notes, a horizon, not, not a total. And we definitely feel very badly that some people believe we're backing into a number. Nothing could be further from the case. So pieces of a sub-area plan, and I'm just going to put aside the capacity number for a second, because it is a chicken and the egg kind of aspect, and staff is ready to work with the planning commission on establishing, as the vice chair has said, a working outer boundary, so that we can begin to do the work to look at what happens on the inside, both from a quantitative aspect as well as qualitative and technical aspect. So if, once that works, work is drafted, we need to adjust that outer boundary, we would. So it is hand in hand, but also in tandem with one another. Fun planning work. So the boundary and the capacity is something that we're ready to work with the planning commission on and have the data and technical support that they may wish to have. But without a doubt, all of you recognize, and staff has been here at the podium, saying that the planning commission does have very good ideas. They do have a grasp of, of form-based or a, a structure-based plan that could accommodate our housing targets, which includes a substantial portion of missing middle, so that we can come up with a, with a concept that says that we're not just planning tall buildings for tall buildings' sake. However, we are increasing the concept of multifamily, where it can be accommodated in Winslow. And clearly, staff joins you with another topic that you brought up in terms of, the planning commission has given a lot of other responsibilities to do, and so we are working pretty hard on. And so we are working pretty hard on, uh, extra meetings so that we can keep them clear of that normal, regular work that has to go in front of them. Councilmember Moreawaki is correct, the Planning Enabling Act is older than most, um, state laws. I think it was passed in like nineteen fifty-nine. And it was that authorized planning commissions. Um, and so yes, they are critically important for local government. As far as the, 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 the idea of joint meeting will definitely bring up with them, um, for, front and center on the, this Thursday's meeting. And again, it's very, very helpful that we have the Chair and Vice Chair, even if they were at home listening to this in real time, that they see that you've seriously given it some thought. We all do strongly support, um, middle income housing, and it is particularly challenging to think about, to, to create the opportunity, increased opportunities for, but not impossibles. Particularly when we consider, um, the Winslow sub area. There are some areas that could easily accommodate modest upzones without vastly changing the character or, um, the experience of the neighborhoods. And, uh, so with that, I'm, I don't want to stand here just kind of stammering. Um, we, the, the, uh, pieces and parts of a sub area plan, uh, Deputy Mayor is correct. On the Winslow Sub Area Plan Project page are drafted the first four chapters of the Sub Area Plan. And so those with the work of the Planning Commission that were, we, we believe they're really close. It's hard work, but they, they are beginning to gel on that outer boundary. Staff is willing to and has that data to help fill in the pieces that remain. And, um, we really do look forward to working hand in hand with the Planning Commission because of the work, this is what staff does full time. You know, Planning Commission, uh, i- is passionate, but they have other jobs. So with that, we would, um, be happy to report back to the City Manager, Acting City Manager, the, um, results of the concept of a joint meeting, work with the Acting City Manager on the date for that, if it, if there's support for it. And, and, you know, whether it be duly in person or, uh, a mix of virtual, because again, it's a, it's a lot to ask. And then just to touch base on the direction forward, on the, 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 the key issues for, um, completing the sub area plan, which we believe will illuminate the balance of the comprehensive plan. Last time we gave you a, a, a monthly update, we, we, um, listed those elements of the comprehensive plan that will most likely be needing to be updated based on the outcomes of, uh, the new planning, um, mandates that were required to, to accommodate. So we'll, uh, we'll come back, we'll listen more to the questions that were asked this evening. And, um, thank you so much for just being so engaged and caring so deeply because it, it makes a difference. It, it doesn't make our job harder, it makes it better.
Thank you so much, Director. Okay, we had a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you all for the great discussion. Um, with that, we will move on. We have one item under Communications, which was Consider Request for an Agenda Item to Discuss Implementing Water Conservation Measures on Bainbridge Island. Councilmember Deets.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief because this is what we call the discuss to discuss. We're just gonna discuss whether to do it. So, uh, I, I'd like us to, in the future, have a council discussion on setting policy guidelines for water conservation on the island. I, I have a brief memo, hopefully it's self-explanatory. Uh, any questions?
You can have questions. That discussions for the future agenda.
Yes, okay. So, uh, I guess I can make a motion, right? I move that council begins discussions and setting policy guidelines for waste, for water conservation on the island.
I second. Okay, give it to, so motion made by Councilmember Deets, seconded by Councilmember Moreawaki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will discuss that on an upcoming agenda.
Oh, I was trying to speak to the motion.
Member Hytopolis.
I can't speak to it now. I, I voted nay, but I would have liked to speak to it.
Well, we can, you can still speak to it.
Go ahead.
You can speak to it.
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree. Um, I just would have said, I think that this is out of order, not out of order, but out of order with the groundwater management plan. I think that the work that we do is we figure out what our parameters are, what are we working with, and then we put the time in on this. I don't think this is the time for this, and I don't think that we have the capacity or the city has the capacity right now. It's a critical part of how we handle our water in the future, but I'm not prepared to support it right now.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, I believe that is it. With that, we are adjourned.